I'd like to call the June 14, 2012, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. On this stop, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newtonson?
Here.
Mr. Pons?
Here.
Mayor Hallman?
Here.
Mr. Fryling?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Our first order of business today is council minutes from the meetings of May 7 and May 10, 2012. Are there any additions or corrections? I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve the meeting minutes from May 7 and May 10, 2012 as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newtonson?
Hi.
Mr. Pons?
Hi.
Mayor Hallman?
Hi.
Mr. Fryling?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Our next order of business are matters of special privilege, and today we have two. The first is the president of Thomas Nelson Community College, Dr. John Dever, and I believe we have Al Lauer, who is the city's representative to the board of the community college. Al, would you and Dr. Dever like to come forward, please?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, it's a privilege to represent the city of Williamsburg on the Thomas Nelson Community College Board. In my relatively brief tenure, I've come to understand the high-quality education offered at our college, serving our communities and thousands of students from various backgrounds effectively and efficiently. Thomas Nelson is a tremendous asset, and we are grateful for the city's support for our important program. Thank you for this opportunity to offer a brief commentary on the state of the college through the good offices of Dr. Dever, who became the ninth president of Thomas Nelson on October 1 last year. Dr. Dever's distinguished background made him a unanimous choice for the position, an endorsement that was strongly supported by the board, the faculty, the staff of the college, as well as the chancellor of the community college system. Dr. Dever has an extensive background in Virginia's community colleges, spanning more than 40 years. Most recently, he served as executive vice president for academic and student services at Northern Virginia Community College in Annandale. He's held similar position at Tidewater Community College. He's also held a leadership and faculty positions at Blue Ridge Community College and at Thomas Nelson, and all the while, he's been a resident of Newport News. As a result of this background, Dr. Dever's thorough knowledge of Virginia's community college system has been involved in research projects that has brought him into contact with college administrators and programs nationwide. Dr. Dever holds a bachelor in history degree from Bellarmine College in Louisville, a master's in English from the University of Kentucky, and a PhD in English from the University of Virginia. His academic background and strength in humanities ensures that he understands the educational role of a community college in the broadest sense, workforce development, to be sure, but also the need for higher education, including community colleges, to instill in their students the essential skills of citizenship: reading, writing, and critical thinking. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Dever.
Al, thank you very much for that, and thank you for your service to the city. And, Dr. Dever, welcome on behalf of the city of Williamsburg and City Council. We're really pleased to have you here today.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for having me, members of council. It's a privilege to be able to address you today and to use this occasion to update you on what is occurring at Thomas Nelson Community College. I hope that this will be the first of a series of periodic meetings that we can have when we agree that would be mutually useful for us to confer together. And please be assured that if there's any time, whenever I can be of help to you individually or with the council as a whole, please let me know. With me today is another member of our college board, Ms. Carol Scheid. Ms. Scheid is a representative from James City County. We're happy to have her today. And on my staff, Dr. Bill Travis, who's the provost of the historic Triangle Campus of the college, Mr. Charles Nunnberger, who is the vice president for finance and administration, and Ms. Cynthia Callaway, who's the vice president for institutional advancement. So pleased to have them with us today. And, Al, thank you so much for that generous and kind introduction. I want you to know that Thomas Nelson Community College continues to serve the Virginia Peninsula through the two main components of our comprehensive mission. First, providing the first two years of baccalaureate education for those students who intend to transfer to a university. And two, providing education and training for those seeking directly to enter or advance in the workforce. Those are the two pillars of our mission, have been from the founding of the institution, and they continue to be the two major activities that we pursue. We do those activities under our comprehensive mission with a commitment to instructional excellence, to ready access for all able to benefit from higher education and workforce training. We are an open-door institution, and to keeping cost affordable. Those are the key values that we have. We also carry out our mission with a strong conviction that our work benefits not only the individual student, but also strengthens the social, economic, cultural, and civic fabric of the larger community. We're all better off when everyone has the opportunity to realize his or her full potential for education and career advancement. I'm sure that many of you all saw, if not all of you saw, the editorial, and it was Tuesday's Daily Press on "Will We Ever Learn: The Challenge of Making Higher Education More Accessible Can't Be Ignored." And it was occasioned immediately by certain circumstances taking place in the city of Charlottesville. We'll pass on those, but what the editorial went on to focus on was what are these issues about the cost-benefit debate in higher education? And if I may, I'd just like to quote a portion of it, because I think it expresses very well what I think we're about at Thomas Nelson Community College. Philosophical differences are not; one thing is clear: We need public universities willing to take a fresh look at addressing the demand for affordable post-high-school programs that better prepare today's students for the workforce. Affordable higher education is good economic policy. Andrew Carnavelli of Georgetown University's Center on Education in the Workforce, writing for the recent Chronicle of Higher Education, estimates that by 2025, the U.S. will need 20 million more two- and four-year college graduates. Without them, we'll be unable to staff new businesses or to make technological advances needed to compete in the global marketplace. Since the early 1980s, the demand for workers with some post-high-school learning has grown by 3% per year, but the supply of college graduates has only grown by 1% per year. And we need not only college graduates, we need graduates with the skills needed to fill the projected openings in high-growth sectors like life sciences, technology, energy, and healthcare. Some students may find a two-year program or trade school can best supply this training. That's what Thomas Nelson is about. We're also, I want to stress again, in conjunction with Mr. Lauer, we're about preparing students for the workforce, and we're about preparing them for life and for full participation in the community: civic, cultural, social, economic. That is our mission. We're stronger as a community when that occurs. Now, for Thomas Nelson in particular, we now serve over 16,000 students a year at the college through our credit program, and over 13,000 students through our non-credit workforce programs each year. More specifically, during the fall 2011 semester, at all college locations, we enrolled 149 credit students who are residents of the city of Williamsburg. We count them one by one. We're particularly pleased, of course, now to have the state-of-the-art and highly attractive Historic Triangle Campus located on Opportunity Way, adjacent to War Hill High School. The building of this campus realizes the long-held aspiration of the college and of this community to better serve the needs of the upper peninsula, with particular attention to the residents of the city of Williamsburg, to James City County, to Upper York County. And this academic year at the Historic Triangle Campus served over 3,300 students at the campus. The great majority of those students are pursuing programs for transfer, particularly in the liberal arts, social sciences, and business administration. We are also offering applied programs there in dental hygiene. It's one of our signature programs there, a very special program that we have, and nursing at that site as well. We offer nursing both at the Historic Triangle Campus and at the Hampton Campus. We also work with all three -- just let me, before going on, I'll just say, our transfer relationship with the universities is very, very solid. I'm particularly pleased that our relationship with the College of William &amp; Mary over the years has grown from a little bit of we're co-located to a genuine partnership in many, many ways. And we have, we work with William &amp; Mary in many ways to serve the community through outreach activities, and we also have an excellent transfer relationship with them that has been reaffirmed. And we're very happy that some of our best and brightest students have that opportunity to go to the College of William &amp; Mary, and the reports we get back is that they're doing very, very well there when they attend. I personally take it very, very, I find it gratifying that the second-oldest institution of higher education in the country and one of the youngest institutions of higher education in the country can join forces that way in such a productive way in meeting the needs of the Commonwealth. We also work with all three Williamsburg-James City County high schools in providing dual-enrollment opportunities. Dual enrollment, as you know, allows qualified high school students to earn college credit while still juniors and seniors in high school. We work with the faculty who are qualified, and we can credential there, and they can teach the courses under our supervision for college credit. As a result, those students have a significant leg up once they graduate, and they either enter a community college or a university because they already have those college credits. In this past year, 192 students from the three high schools were enrolled in the dual-enrollment program. And I'll be meeting with Superintendent Constantino later on this summer, and I'm sure we'll be exploring further opportunities for our partnership between the school system and the college. Another major area in which we participate, as you know, is, of course, is workforce development. And our Discovery Center is located very near here, as well as our Peninsula Workforce Development Center located in Hampton, very much serves the needs of the community. The Discovery Center, since its start in 2009, has served over 4,300 individuals. One example of that is that in the past three years, we've served 192 people representing 49 employers in the Prepare, Care, Share, Hospitality Training, and Familiaration Tours offered in collaboration with the Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance. For the past two years, all classroom sessions have been held at the Discovery Center, and among many Williamsburg employers, city of Williamsburg employers who were served through this includes Colonial Connections, Colonial Williamsburg, Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance, Westgate Resorts, Williamsburg Area Transport, William &amp; Mary Conference Services, Williamsburg Hospitality House, and others that are served there. One of our biggest utilizers of the Discovery Center is the city of Williamsburg Department of Social Services for their employment and job readiness program. They've used the facility every other month since June 2011, and we provide a discount for them to be able to do that. Another example of workforce development that we do is a CNA program, a Certified Nursing Assistant Program. That is a non-credit program for those entry-level positions that are so important in assisted living and nursing home care, and we offer that out at our Historic Triangle Campus. We've had several classes go through that, and we do that in close association with such employers as Williamsburg Landing, Chambro, Comfort Keepers, Eastern State Hospital, Riverside, and Morningside, working hand-in-hand with them to see that we have that. Finally, let me just say a word about funding for the college. As you know, as you may know, we've got two primary sources of funding that come to us. One is the funding from the General Assembly that we receive called the General Fund, and the other is from tuition and fee paid by our students and parents. The idea in the beginning of the community college system was that 70% would come from the General Fund and 30% from students and parents. I think you probably know where I'm going. It's pretty much flipped from that, and it's now the latest figures I had. It was about 65% tuition and fees, 35% from the General Assembly. Although our governor has tried to hold that to some degree, it's still actually going that way as we move. He has mitigated it to some degree, but still, it's increasingly placed upon the students themselves and their parents. Now, the localities also play an important role in supporting Thomas Nelson Community College. And the longstanding agreement that we have with the state, this goes back to the '60s, Governor Mills Godwin, when the community college system was established, was that the state would, that the localities would provide the funding to acquire, develop, and to maintain and improve the campus sites, not the state. And so that's always been outside the buildings, what the campus is, a function that we need to come to you and the other five localities: the cities of Colson, Hampton, Newport News, and York County, and James City County. We need to come to you and ask for your support each year. Those are the projects that we've identified in our capital improvement and our landscape master plans, the projects that we pursue, and those projects, of course, are reviewed and approved by our local board, by the representatives that you appoint there. And so there's always a check on what we're doing to make sure that those funds are done right. Your support also makes it possible for us to operate our workforce development centers, the Discovery Center and the Peninsula Workforce Development Center in Hampton, and that's critical for us. Vice President Nunnberger works closely with Mr. Tuttle and members of his staff every year on what those arrangements are, as he does with the other localities, and I'm very pleased and thank you very much for your full support this past year of all the requests that we've made from you. Thank you so much, much for that. It's critical for our operation that we have that support from you. I hope that you find the benefits provided by Thomas Nelson Community College to be well worth the investment that you're making to ensure that the citizens of our communities have affordable access to opportunities for quality higher education and to the critical skills and training needed to succeed in the workplace of the day and tomorrow. If you had any comments or questions, I'd certainly be glad to take them.
President Dever, thank you very much for being here, and we really appreciate your board members and other administrators being here as well. Are there any questions?
No questions, just a comment.
I think the point about delivering, providing quality education is, in its pure sense, economic
development, and particularly with the audiences you're working with, it's so valuable to this community and our ability to continue to be competitive in providing people who are prepared to be in the workforce and help attract businesses to this area that want to employ those people. So, a couple of years ago, I had the opportunity, as I'm sure some of my colleagues did, to go out to campus and see the opening of the dental hygiene facility that you referenced. That's a terrific facility, and I was just amazed. Why isn't my dentist using some of this stuff? But what was impressive about it was how they're simultaneously teaching newer technologies and older technologies, because as it's an evolving field, the people have to be prepared for whatever environment they're going to be able to find a position in, and you can't always be assured of finding an office that's got the newest technology. So that was impressive, but more impressive than the facility, because a lot of people can build a building if you have the money, or outfit a building. It was the quality of the students that I encountered there, and I don't know what I was expecting, but I was just so impressed. Many of these students had, not only is this post-high school, this is in the middle of an adult life, where they've gone out and had other real-life experiences and made the choice to come back to school to enhance their education so that they can get a different kind of job. And I just thought that it was just terrific. Attracting, retaining, and graduating top-notch students is not something that happens by accident. You have to have great faculty there and good administration, well, great administration, I won't say just good. And I know you can't take so much credit for that, since you haven't been here but a year, but you've got a great team out there, a great facility, and I just very much appreciate what you do and your entire staff does for this community. And also, very encouraged by the effort to build collaboration and partnerships with the college and other entities in this community to work together to provide, how aptly named, Opportunity Way for your location. So, thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate that comment very much. I will respond in one way. I was at the college 20 years as a faculty member before I began my period of exile coming back, and during that time, what I really loved as a faculty member was exactly what you described, which was the diversity of the classes that you would have in terms of age, in terms of socioeconomic background, in terms of what their aspirations and career goes for. You mix those people up in that way, and what you have is the community in your classroom. You mix people up that way, and the kind of learning that can go on and the kind of dynamics of the class discussion, very, very strong. It's something that is unique and is extremely rewarding when you're a faculty member dealing with that group of students, and you bring out the very best from them.
Thank you.
Several of my friends at William &amp; Mary, and then one person I'm in law school with, did the two years and then transferred in, so I'm particularly attuned to that, and it's, you know, it's an excellent program. It's definitely something to be proud of.
That's great to hear.
President Dever, thank you for coming. You know, I agree with my colleagues, and I'm really glad to hear that you're going to be meeting with Superintendent Constantino. One of the things that he shared with the community here is developing ways to not only get our students college-ready, but get them college or career-ready, and I think this is where Thomas Nelson comes in, because while it offers that traditional college opportunity, it also helps people get into the workforce development to develop those skills and trades that this community's going to need. And so, kudos to you and continued success.
Just a couple of things. Thank you for coming. The first one is, I'm the city council rep to the workforce development group, and they've done wonderful work, and I think that Thomas Nelson's contribution has been very good. The other thing is, just to follow up on what Paul said about the dental clinic, not only is it training people, the people in that program are offering direct care in the community. They do internships at Old Town Medical Center, which is another wonderful relationship, and the need for dental care in this community is probably greater than the need for medical care, and I think it only helps to have more and more people providing those services in the community, so thank you for that.
Thank you again for being here, and we look forward to having you back periodically to give us updates. And again, as you've heard from council, your institution is a critical part of this community. It adds greatly to everything we value in this community, and we look forward to working with you in cooperation in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Our next order of business under matters of special privilege is the 2012 Williamsburg Business Appreciation Award. This award is sponsored by the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority. The 2012 winner this year is Williamsburg Merchants Incorporated. They were sponsored by Bill Carr. I believe we have Sam and Cabal Wallace are with us today. If you would join me at the front, I have an award for you that was provided by Fleming Buck of Flemings. He donated this, and I have a few words to say. Why don't you come around here? I'll try to juggle all of these things at once. Hopefully not drop this one. Three generations of the Wallace family and the city of Williamsburg have shared a long and prosperous history. The family patriarch, Robert Wallace, attended the College of William &amp; Mary on a football scholarship and graduated in 1920, having served three years during World War I. Bob subsequently was elected into the William &amp; Mary Hall of Fame. Bob founded his first business, The College Shop, in 1920, almost a century ago. Over the years, he owned many businesses, including Madison's and the Williamsburg Bus Terminal. Bob also served as an assistant football coach at William &amp; Mary, president of the Williamsburg City Council, James City County School Board Chair, and as a member of the Board of Directors of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. His sons, Sam and Bob, took over after Robert Senior's death in 1962, and in 1963, they founded The Christmas Shop in Merchant Square. In 1972, Sam Wallace founded Williamsburg Merchants Incorporated, which include The College Shop, now King's Treasure, The Christmas Shop, and Madison's. Under Sam Wallace and with the assistance of many longtime dedicated employees, these businesses continue today. Now operated by the third generation, Sam Wallace Jr. and Cabal Wallace, The Merchant Square Shops have been joined by the Williamsburg General Store, Haagen-Dazs, and the Wallaces' Trading Post on Richmond Road. These family businesses employed 30 full-time employees and 75 to 80 employees during peak season, and they continually innovate in the operations of their businesses. The Wallaces have historically been active in the community and contribute to and are supportive of the College of William &amp; Mary and the William &amp; Mary Athletic Foundation. Sam serves on the Merchant Square Association Board and previously served on the Chamber of Commerce Board. For their commitment to the Williamsburg economy and also to the very fabric of this community, we salute the Wallaces and wish them many, many more years of success. Try not to drop this, but we have this for you. Okay. Thank you. Sam, would you like?
Sure. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Cabal, thank you.
Thank you. We're really honored to have received this award today, and we want to thank you very much for that. We're proud to be a third-generation business in Williamsburg, that our grandfather started, our father, and our uncle ran for many years, and, you know, it gives us a great sense of pride to be here in Williamsburg and running those businesses. And I'd be remiss, especially with all the talk earlier about staff, in not thanking our staff, because we have a lot of long-term employees. We've had thousands of employees, and we have staff, our probably average age or average tenure of those 35 full-time employees is between 18 and 22 years. So, we have staff that have been with us 30 and 40 years, and so that says a lot about our community. In 2000, we, Cabal and I, decided to expand our business, and we had a lot of options, whether to move out of Williamsburg, there were other resorts that we could have gone to and opened similar businesses, and we elected to invest in Williamsburg. We wanted to stay here. We decided we wanted all of our businesses here. We're from Williamsburg. We love Williamsburg. We wanted to promote Williamsburg, and we wanted to invest in Williamsburg. So, we did that by opening the General Store, opening Wallace's Trading Post, and we're honored today to be, I guess, rewarded for that, or appreciated for that, as the word says. So, that was kind of what we did. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Bill Carr from the Economic Development Authority to come forward so we can have a picture of him. we can have a picture of him.
Actually, would you mind just shifting this a little bit this way?
Yeah, bl- bl- the view of me.
There we go. That's good. Just take a couple. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I should thank Bill Carr for nominating.
Yes. Here's your, here's the box. Oh, I knew I'd forget something. Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. It's always fun to recognize somebody in the community for all the good things they do, so.
You're just jealous of that president city council title.
That's right. When did that change? We have to do a little historical work here. Okay. Our next order of business today are public hearings, and we have three. The first public hearing is on City Lofts. This is a hearing on PCR 12-05 and PCR 12-06. Reed, would you like to begin?
1406 LLC is proposing to rezone 2.6 acres at 1406 Richmond Road, which is a present quality in its suites that you see in this photo. From a 118-room hotel to City Lofts, a 94-one-bedroom student apartment facility. This will require the creation of a new zoning district, the PDU Plan Development Urban District, rezoning the property to the new district, and approving a development plan and a management plan for the project. This is essentially the same procedure that we used for Tribe Square, where we created the Plan Development College District. The applicant states in their proposed management plan that the owner's goal is to create the premier off-campus student housing community in the market. We want to deliver the highest level of comfort, security, maintenance, and convenience to our residents. The comprehensive plan, and you see the City Loft site outlined in white, this is Ironbound Road, Richmond Road, Bypass Road, New Hope Road, and Middle Street. This is designated as general commercial land use by the plan. It's adjacent to high-density multifamily residential land use where the Sylvia Brown Apartments and the Lawson Apartments are located. And the plan says the proximity this area to the college, talking about the high-density multifamily area, proximity to the college makes these apartments very attractive for helping the need for college student housing. Because of its strategic location, this area should be further studied to determine whether or not it should be considered for a higher residential density and/or mixed-use development. And adding to that, the plan also has as one of its housing goals to develop an adequate solution to college student housing. City regulations should encourage appropriate student-oriented housing off-campus to supplement the housing provided by the city. And that was sort of the guiding recommendations from the plan that I used in analyzing this project. So, the first thing that needs to be done is to create a new zoning district, the Plan Development Urban District. Like I mentioned, it's similar to the PDC District used for Tribe Square. It's designed to encourage high-density multifamily housing that includes student housing, and it's narrowly drafted, so at this point, it can only be used for property designated as general commercial, not fronting, on Richmond Road. And this will be, if this is adopted, then this idea will be incorporated into our planning for the midtown planning area that we're working on now. Some of the specifics for the PDU District dwelling unit occupancy would be two unrelated persons in efficiency or one-bedroom apartments, and four in two-or-more-bedroom apartments. Permitted residential uses would be multifamily dwellings and student dwellings. Student dwellings are what is being proposed here. Residential develop density, this is a new concept we're using here, is fifty-six bedrooms per acre. This is equivalent to Tribe Square density, which is fourteen units an acre, but each unit has four bedrooms. Actually, the density proposed here is thirty-eight bedrooms per net acre. And the height in this new district is the same as the B3 District, forty-five feet, and this facility falls within that height. This is the rezoning map indicating the City Loft's location. Lawson Apartments here, Sylvia Brown Apartments here, and adjacent B3 uses here, and this is the old Princess Anne Hotel. The rezoning will approve the development plan, which includes the existing hotel building. And this shows the proposed floor plan for the building, and this is the first floor. You can see the rooms, study rooms, resident manager, a bike garage. That's sort of a cool amenity for the project. And your second floor, which the upper floors all use the same layout. This is the development plan with the additional landscaping that's being proposed highlighted in green. There will be a new dumpster proposal, a new dumpster enclosure constructed, and there will be some outdoor bicycle parking provided there. And that's a color rendering of the proposal. This property is not located in Architectural Review District, so review by the Architectural Review Board is not required. As I analyzed this proposal, I noted that it's located in the area that our plan, our current plan, is identified as having potential for multifamily dwellings. It's between general commercial and high-density residential land uses. And as I mentioned early, the plan says that our regulations should encourage appropriately located student-oriented housing. And in several other statements, the plan, I think, supports the type of project like City Lofts at this location, which is very close to the college and is connected by good hot, by good roads and sidewalks, and also you have the new multi-use trail that connects the nearby School of Education to the main campus. It's also served by Williamsburg Area Transport Bus Stop. That's about 500 feet from the building on Richmond Road, so that's another plus. And it is located near a variety of city businesses and restaurants within walking distance to the students living in this facility, which is another plus. So, this project takes a poorly-located, underperforming hotel out of circulation, replaces it with a project that satisfies a need for increased student housing. It does so in a way that doesn't impact the cities' close-in, single-family neighborhoods. It helps meet the plan's goal of developing an adequate solution to college student housing. Staff recommended approval. Planning Commission held a public hearing last month on May 16th and recommended approval by a 4-0 vote. To carry out the Planning Commission's recommendation, City Council would need to approve Proposed Ordinance 12-09, which establishes the PDU District, and Ordinance 12-10, which rezones the property, approves the development plan, and approves the management plan. When the public hearing is open, Mr. Tarly, attorney for the developer, has additional slides to go through and explain the proposal. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have now or at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Reed. Are there any questions for Reed at this point?
I have.
Okay.
On this particular slide, it looks to me like there are a lot of parking places. Are there more than they need? I mean--
There, I think there are two more than they need.
Just two?
Just two. There will be, the student population housed here will be, some of the units with the bigger bedrooms will be for two students, some with one. Smaller bedrooms will be for one, so there'll be 143 students, plus the manager living on the site, and there are 143 spaces required, 146 spaces provided.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this matter of City Lofts may do so. Mr. Tarly, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm John Tarly, counsel for 1406 LLC. 1406 LLC is composed of four members, and they're with me today, Demetrius Farakis, Sandy Garber, Elaine Garber, and Nicholas Farakis, who are all known to counsel for their other contributions to the city. I feel fortunate to be able to represent them today to bring this proposal forward. It's an exciting, ambitious proposal to help reuse a property that's underperforming, and one that addresses a couple of needs that the city has struggled with for years, to benefit the neighborhoods nearest the college, and to benefit the businesses in the commercial area of Richmond Road. Mr. Nestor explained the background of the comprehensive plan. I'll try not to be duplicative of his presentation. I'm going to discuss two important considerations that we see on this rezoning. One, the proposed project meets the demand for off-campus student housing outside the residential neighborhoods, putting a significant number of students in the business area of the city of Williamsburg. And second, the proposed rezoning allows conversion of a property, the adaptive reuse, if you will, of a property that can't survive in its current form in this particular area due to market conditions, location of the property, and the current condition of the property. This is the rear elevation that you saw from Mr. Nestor's slide, from the High Street Garage. And, you know, for decades, talking about student demand, city leaders have struggled to come up with a solution to, for student housing off-campus that would take the students outside of the residential neighborhoods nearby. Now, this particular slide showing the property, put on there the current assessment, and we know that the property doesn't have that value any longer, based upon current, recent foreclosures in the area and the prices at auctions for several of those properties. There's no way that that parcel can generate that kind of value. So, you're taking this particular property that can't survive in this condition and in this particular form, combined with bringing students, 143 students, out of, who are looking for off-campus housing, and putting them in an area that is easy walking distance from the other commercial areas of the city. There was a study, a survey done on campus of William &amp; Mary regarding student housing, and they had a significant number of respondents. You can see in the footnote there about over a thousand respondents. And just briefly, a slight majority of the students would rather live off-campus, and the ones who wanted to live off-campus would rather live close to the college. That makes sense. You could bike or walk to the campus, rather than a house in a neighborhood. And I think the city would agree that that's preferable as well, to have them in an apartment rather than a house in a neighborhood. Almost all of that large percentage of the respondents would rather live in a student-only apartment complex. And finally, they'd rather share an apartment rather than living alone. Now, it's an interesting conclusion that we draw from these results, that the students would rather live among their peers, not in a neighborhood, but in an apartment that has their fellow students in it. And as you know, the inventory for such a product is limited, if it exists at all. And that's what this project aims to address. Now, looking at this particular property, there's a number of reasons why it can't survive, and the rezoning is necessary. The older properties operating as budget hotels are struggling. They're, the foreclosure, although it was York County, it's right next to the city line, and the Lexington Hotel is an example, and that one had road frontage. This particular property doesn't. You can't see it from the road. And so, it becomes a spiral of, it loses its flag, it goes down a flag, yet you can't see it from the road, and on it goes. The oversupply of hotels, which has been documented several times. And even though there has been a mildly positive trend, this particular hotel has not seen it and can't. And then we go to the value, as I indicated before, the market value. The hotel is far below its tax-assessed value. Now, this is a win-win for both the student issues and with respect to this particular property. It is a true adaptive reuse of the property. We're taking that existing structure and maintaining its blueprint. There's not going to be tearing down of something and rebuilding, using that same structure. The students living outside of the residential area, having ample opportunity to live off-campus without living in the houses nearby. The location, as Mr. Nestor pointed out, on the bus line, easy access to High Street and the other commercial areas. The neighborhood impact, you're bringing, you're opening up those houses and providing more incentive for owner occupancy in the neighborhoods nearby, and giving the students another opportunity to move out. And repurposing this property, the value issue again, is going to increase and use this property as its highest and best use that it can be. It's not going to be, and this is the ambitious part of it, it's not like we can just change the locks and it becomes a student apartment. The 1406, the members of 1406 LLC are going to have to do extensive renovations in order to bring it to this, to bring it to fruition, and they're willing to do that and to invest in Williamsburg and into this project. There's going to be a complete rehabilitation of the apartments, from the hotel rooms to the apartments. Although some of the stuff in there is new and can be reused, there is going to be, have to be some resituating of the rooms. Roof needs to be replaced. Obviously, security is going to be a big issue, and they intend to put in an enhanced system. And then with the building and mechanical system upgrades, the last upgrade is several years ago, and that's, that needs to be done as well. So, even though, as I said, it's not, to recognize the ambitious nature of the project is just not turning this around. It takes a significant investment, not only in the purchase of the property, but in the redevelopment internally. We certainly would be remiss if we didn't point out the creativity shown by staff in coming up with a proposed, with the PDU, which is remarkably similar to the Tribe Square development, to permit this type of project to go forward. But in the end, with these types of amenities that are planned, the members of 1406 expect this to be the premier apartment rentals for students, and with the features that they appreciate, and in many of these cases would demand. they appreciate, and in many of these cases would demand, and also providing assistance to the nearby businesses, another 140 people who are close by to use those services. So with that, we respectfully ask for your recommendation and your approval, to approve the new zoning designation to PDU, and then your approval of the rezoning of the property to PDU. Thank you.
Great.
Available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tarly. Anyone else wish to speak to this issue of City Lofts? Please state your name and address.
Yes, Terrence Wheel, Harriet Tubman Drive. I'd like to applaud the applicant for the ambitious nature of the project, and it looks like a good project overall. I have been asked to bring up the question of security, and I think that's an important aspect of having this many students in one building, and perhaps if we had some input from law enforcement, or maybe there's some other ideas about whether this is seen that there could be a problem, and what impact that might have on the city. But in general, I think it's a good-looking, ambitious project. Look forward to seeing it.
Great, thank you, Terrence. Anyone else wish to speak to this matter? If not, I'll close the public...
Mr. Tarly, if you wanted to talk about the security issue?
Would you like to respond to that question? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. There will be a resident manager at the facility. Each floor will have, similar to the resident in the RA, in the college system, there will be a person in the lobby for after-hour entry, and so there are, clearly, that is an issue that the owners take very seriously as well, and it's set forth in the management plan that was submitted with the application.
Great, thank you very much. Any other? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Before we go anywhere... As a result of my summer employment, Tarly Robinson, who's representing the applicant, I think it's appropriate that I abstain from any vote in any discussion today.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's just nice to have someone else abstaining.
I didn't know what the proper order was. You're the only one that ever has.
There's a lot to love about this project. Mr. Tarly and Mr. Nestor have pointed out a lot of the positive aspects of this, just highlight a few of them. The location of this hotel facilities that currently operates is difficult to sustain because it is off of the primary corridor, yet it has terrific access to the college through the rear of the property on Trayburn, which almost directly connects into Compton, and as Mr. Nestor also pointed out, via the trail that's been constructed and the magnificent bridge behind the School of Education at the college. It also has good access to the public transportation and provides an additional route down Richmond Road. Parking, as Ms. Knutson pointed out, is generous, and also gives the opportunity for additional parking in the summertime, if this is not, maybe it will be occupied by students, but if it's not, there's additional parking available for the businesses in that area if the applicants decide to allow that. The management plan looks good, and the, I think, innovative and adaptive reuse, the amenities that they're incorporating within the building to make it attractive to students, just seems like the type of place it would draw students to want to live there. When we had a candidate forum that was sponsored by the Matoka Court Homeowners Association during the recent election process, the question was posed to us, well, you know, what can be done to help take pressure off of single-family homes in neighborhoods? And I think the one thing that makes the most sense is for people to get behind this project and support it, because those 147 or so students that can be accommodated here are three-quarters of the growth of the college that's going to be required over this current four-year period. You add that to Tribe Square, you add that to Fraternity Village, and we start to make real progress in available inventory of student housing compared to the number of students, which is the only way we're effectively going to take that pressure off of single-family homes in the neighborhoods. So the project is great. But the other thing I want to point out is, I'd just like to express my personal appreciation to the Florakis Brothers. About eight-plus years ago, we were on a different side of a similar project, where they were trying to, again, help with the same issue. They were willing to reinvest in the community. At the time, we didn't see it the same way. That's, I'm speaking about myself now. That project didn't go through, that didn't deter them. Here they are back again, willing to try with what I think is an even better plan and even better location, and it's that kind of persistence that I just admire, because they are doing a terrific job of reinvesting in this community, from the City Green site, the Cook Building, the project on Harrison Avenue, and now this, that they are the embodiment of the private sector stepping in and helping resolve issues that the public faces, and I just want to personally thank them for that, because I'm not sure everybody would have stuck to that and come back again with a similar project after the way the first project was handled. So I just want to share that.
Great, thank you, Paul. Scott, are you sure you don't want to...
Well, now I understand better the challenge Councilman Foster has in following Paul. There isn't much more to add to that. You know, I do think that this, I would agree with staff's recommendation and what you've already heard. This is a smart project, it's the right way to go. You know, I'm not sure that, as a hotel, that property would ever succeed. It's almost, you look at the zoning map, it's zoned incorrectly to be part of B3 because it's off Richmond Road. It's hard to see it, you can't get to it, and it's more appropriately, this use is more appropriate for the location, and it does tie into the college and coming through Lofts and Apartments, it offers that good connectivity, so I think it's a good project, and look forward to sporting it.
Paul said everything I had written down, and a few more things, but I just want to say, I think it's a wonderful project, and I think the background of the people doing it will assure its success.
Great, thank you. I'll echo that. I think I was really impressed with the management plan that this group put forward. I think it took, again, as Paul suggested, this is a work of the private sector with the college and with the city. They listened to what students said in their survey, they responded to what students want, and I think this is going to be something that will be extremely successful. And at one point, I was asked, sort of, what has the city ever done for neighborhoods? Well, one answer is, projects like this, Tribe Square, do a lot for the neighborhoods that are close to the college, because they take the pressure off of those neighborhoods, and that's very, very important. And as a resident of one of those neighborhoods, I applaud this on many, many grounds. With that, I'll look for...
Kim, Michelle, then can we do these as one motion, or should we do them as two?
You can do them as one or as separate motions.
Why don't we just do them separately?
Okay, then I'll move the approval of proposed ordinance 12-09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Mayor Holman, excuse me, Mr. Freiling?
Aye.
I'll be president.
Abstain.
Mr. Mayor, I move that 1406 Richmond Road be rezoned from B3 to PDU as detailed in proposed ordinance 12-10. This recommendation approves the submitted conceptual plans and conceptual architectural plans for the City Lofts development, and approves the management plan for the student dwellings.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, call the roll, please.
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
I don't know what I'm doing here. I'm jumping ahead, I guess, I'm sorry. Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Freiling?
Aye.
And Mr. Foster?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you all for being here and doing such a terrific job in bringing this project forward. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is use and parking regulations in the Arts District. Mr. Nestor?
We went over this at our work session on Monday, so I will attempt to be brief in my presentation. This is the Arts District boundary on Richmond Road, and as we all know, this consideration was initiated by the city's EDA that requested that staff and commission review parking and use regulations in the Arts District with the objective of streamlining the regulations to encourage redevelopment and adaptive reuse. The LB2 district is in two sections of the city. This is the Arts District portion of the LB2 district along Richmond Road, from Sooters at Brook Street to City Green, then over to the Flaky Baker at Bacon Avenue, and that's the boundary of the LB2 district. Any changes to the LB2 district will also apply to the small district that is located on Penniman Road. So the LB2 district is our mixed-use district. It was created in 2008, and like I did on Monday, I have two proposals up here, the original proposal and the alternate proposal. Planning Commission on the original proposal, both for the LB2 district and for the Midtown Parking District, reviewed the proposal on April 18th, made some changes to the LB2, proposed LB2 district regulations, held a public hearing on May 16th. After the public hearing, they recommended to council by a three-to-two vote that these two proposals be denied and instead be considered as part of the comprehensive plan update process. And this recommendation was transmitted to council, and that's what we're discussing today. So they, their recommendation was based on the original proposal. There were eight citizens that spoke at the Planning Commission public hearing, and they raised numerous concerns about the proposal. Following the Planning Commission meeting, Carolyn Murphy and I worked to develop an alternate proposal that incorporated concerns that were expressed at the Planning Commission public hearing. We then individually contacted all of the persons that spoke at the Planning Commission public hearing and went over the alternate proposal with them. So the initial proposal, the original proposal, essentially made most uses in the LB2 district uses permitted by right. We proposed 10 or less multifamily dwellings are allowed by right. Currently, you need a special use permit. The alternate proposal continues what our current regulation is, you need a special use permit for any multifamily. The original proposal said 14 units per net acre is your by-right residential density. The alternate proposal, as is the case with the current regulations, has eight units an acre by right, 14 with a special use permit. The original proposal had no floor area limitation for retail use. The alternate proposal mirrors what's currently in the ordinance for retail use of over 5,000 square feet of floor area, you need a special use permit. That's for an individual use of that size. You could have, if you had three retail uses in a building, none of which individually met 5,000 square feet, you would not need a special use permit, even if the total was more. The original proposal proposed no floor area limitation for restaurant use. The current, the current ordinance says over 1,000 square feet, you need a special use permit. The alternate proposal raises that to 2,500 square feet. The original proposal had no room limitation for hotels. The alternate proposal keeps our current regulation of 10 rooms by right, over 10, you need a special use permit. Both proposals and the current ordinance require a special use permit for buildings over 10,000 square feet. So comparing the two, one of the things we were looking at is the problems that keep, kept coming up with restaurant uses or uses that had a restaurant component. For example, Extraordinary Cupcakes is a retail store. There's no tables and chairs for you to sit at and consume their product. So if they wanted to put tables and chairs, they would be a restaurant by definition of the zoning ordinance. They're larger than 1,000 square feet, so they can't do it now without a special use permit. Under this proposal, they could change the, put in tables and chairs if they wanted to, change the use to a restaurant, and it would be allowed by use. They still have parking to address, which I'll get to in a minute. Another building in the area, Sooters Furniture Store, is 5,700 square feet in area. If that were proposed to be changed to a single retail store, the current regulations would say you need a special use permit. The original proposal allowed it by right. The alternate proposal says you need a special use permit. The same would be the case with, if that was proposed to change to a restaurant use, the current ordinance says you need a special use permit. The alternate, the original proposal said that would be permitted by right, the alternate proposal goes back to the special use permit. The other component to the proposal was the Midtown Parking District, and this is the original proposal boundary, which is exactly the boundary of the Arts District. The alternate proposal takes out the residential uses along Lafayette Street and the Side Streets. The alternate I presented on Monday did not include the community pool and the ballet studio. At council's request, I put that back in. So the only, so the only change is taking out the residential uses. Now, the intent of the original proposal was to create a uniform parking requirement, the same for all uses in the district, like we have now for the Williamsburg Shopping Center, which is one per 300 square feet because it's a shopping center. Or in the Downtown Parking District, there's no additional parking required. So both for shopping centers and in the downtown, in a, you have a building, you can change the use from a store to a restaurant, or from a restaurant to an office, you know, back and forth without any parking implications. So that's what the original proposal tried to do, by creating a one-per-400-square-foot parking requirement for all uses, and also eliminating the .25 spaces per visitor, for visitor parking per multifamily dwelling unit. Now, the alternate proposal goes back for the amount of parking required to what is in our existing ordinance, so there's no change to the amount of parking required, one per 100 for restaurant, one per 200 for retail, one per 400 for office. What the alternate proposal does is says if you need a parking reduction, you can apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an up to 75% reduction, which, which would allow the possibility of changing from an office to a restaurant use, since the restaurant parking is a 75% reduction from the office use. If it was in conjunction with a request for a special use permit and you also needed a parking waiver, that would be decided by planning, by City Council as part of the special use permit process. If it was in conjunction with a site plan that required Planning Commission review, Planning Commission would decide the parking reduction request. So we... So, we didn't want to subject people to have to go through two different processes to reach a decision. So, the basic difference between these two proposals is the fact that the original proposal was a by-right situation, the same as the proposed changes to the LB2 District. The alternate proposal allows the same degree of flexibility, except you need a special exception or a special use permit or approval under the site plan review process. There's nothing by right in the alternate proposal if you need a parking reduction. So, that is the outline of the original proposal that was developed by staff and which is recommended for denial by Planning Commission, and the alternate proposal that was developed by staff based on concerns expressed by the citizens that addressed the Planning Commission at the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Reed. Let me come back to council for any questions for Mr. Nestor at this point.
I do have a couple of questions. And I just want to use this as an example because it's a fairly well-known business, but this isn't about one particular business. This is about the commercial area of the Arts District. Using Extraordinary Cupcakes as the example, what is the square footage of that business?
Eleven hundred.
So, under the current, one parking space per 100 square feet, as a restaurant, they would need to have 11 parking spaces?
Correct.
In order to have a table and chairs in it?
Correct.
If somebody were to open an art gallery with a little coffee bar in the back, and I think the earlier iteration of Quirks of Art, when it was Kinks, Quirks and Caffeine, they had, they served coffee in the rear of what basically is an art shop, would they be considered a restaurant if there was a place to sit down and have a cup of coffee?
The way we have, we have made the determination, per the ordinance, is if there's food and drink provided and there is seating provided, it's considered a restaurant.
So, if somebody were to open a 2,500 square foot, which doesn't seem too large to me, art gallery with a coffee bar in the back with four stools at a counter, they would need 25 parking spaces? And again, I'm not suggesting that this is the way we should go, or, I mean, I'm just trying to understand the scope of what we're talking about. If somebody were to come in to Sooters and put a restaurant there, and you can argue whether that's a good place or not for a restaurant, but that's a 5,700 square foot building.
Correct.
Not a particularly large building, not nearly as big as some of the restaurants in Merchant Square, they would need 57 parking spaces?
Yes.
Which is probably about as large as the center parking lot or close to it in the area that's bounded by the trellis and the blue tallon and bins. That center parking lot is probably around that range. So, they would need a parking lot that big for a restaurant of that size under the current guideline?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Questions?
One question. Would you go back to the LB2 comparison? Yeah. Is that?
It doesn't show up in this comparison. In our current regulations, there is, there's no specific prohibition on drive-through windows for restaurants. In the original proposal, there was a, for by-right restaurants of any size, drive-through windows were prohibited. They were allowed in the original proposal with a special use permit. The alternate proposal, which increases the restaurant size to 2,500 square feet, also prohibits drive-through windows in restaurants, period. There's no special use permit, no by, right, they're not allowed in the district.
So, let me make sure I understand. Currently, they are prohibited?
Currently, they are allowed.
Allowed.
Under our current regulation.
The original proposal limited them, or could have them with an SUP.
Correct.
And the alternative proposal eliminates them?
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I do have a question, or maybe I just need some extra clarification. In your alternative proposal for the Midtown Parking, you allow for 75% of a building, proposed business could come and go to BZA, PC, depending on the protocol, to get up to 75% allowance on parking spaces. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Okay, the 75% figure was based on the fact that the office parking requirement is one per 400 square feet, the restaurant parking requirement is one per 100. To get from office, from 1 to 400 to 1 to 100, that's a 75, 75% reduction, from 1 to 100 to 1 to 400. So, 75% was picked to allow the flexibility to go from an office to a restaurant without having to provide additional parking if the Board of Zoning Appeals or council or Planning Commission felt that was necessary. So, it's to fit in that range that 75% figure was chosen.
And that authorization doesn't convey to a second owner of that space or lesor of that space?
No, that's correct. The way the alternate proposal is crafted, that a parking reduction granted is only to that specific business. So, if Extraordinary Cupcakes got a parking reduction, and they went out of business and another restaurant wanted to go into that space, they don't have a parking reduction, they would have to apply separately. And it would apply to any use that receives a parking reduction, only for that specific business, even if the next business coming in was, you know, if you've changed from a men's clothing store to a women's clothing store, you'd still need a special approval for the different business.
Let me follow up on that. Going back to Paul's example of Sooters, which would, under the current and alternative proposal, with 700 square feet, would require 57 parking spaces. If, under the original proposal, that would be 1 to 400, so they'd require about 14. But they could, under the alternative, either go to the BZA or city council or Planning Commission, depending upon the nature of it, to ask for the reduction, and the reduction would take them down to that 14, or 14 or 15.
Right. And in the case of Sooters, if that was desired, to convert that to a restaurant, under the alternate LB2 proposal, it's a restaurant bigger than 2,500 square feet, it needs a special use permit, so the parking reduction, which would be required, would be decided by city council in conjunction with ruling on a special use permit.
So, it's the same, they're two separate decisions, but part of the, two parts of the same decision?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay. That helps. Okay, thank you. Any further questions at this point?
Thank you, Reed. That's very helpful. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the issue of use and parking regulations in the Arts District, please come forward. I do have one speaker's card, Nancy Canning. If you'd come forward and state your name and address. Nancy, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Canning, a resident of 209 Nelson Avenue, within five minutes' walking distance of the area. That would be directly impacted by the original two Planning Department proposals and by the revised proposals you are considering today. Before I begin, may I ask a point of clarification in terms of the procedure? According to the public notice in the Gazette, which I cut out on May 26th, this hearing is to discuss PCR number 12007 and PCR number 12008, both of which are the original proposals on the left. Now, subsequently to this, there was, as Mr. Nestor said, personal conversations in the municipal building in which I was given this alternate proposal. So, my procedural question is, are you here to vote on the original proposal? If so, our comments on the alternate would not be relevant until we hear what your decision is about PCR number 12007 and PCR 12008. If you vote to approve 07 and 008, 007 and 008, then our discussion of the alternate, which is also numbered the same, would be irrelevant. So, both of these are numbered the same, 007, 008, both what was in the paper, the original, and what is on this sheet of paper, the revision. So, procedurally, what will you do?
Let me ask the city attorney to explain sort of what the nature of the process is once we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Once the city council has a recommendation from the Planning Commission, the city council can consider the original proposal. The city council can make changes as they deem appropriate to the original proposal. And I believe the Planning Commission staff submitted changes that council might consider that addressed the concerns that were expressed during the Planning Commission's discussion of this matter.
So, someone speaking at the public forum could address the original or the revised proposals or any other possible, because again, council has the ability to make whatever changes it deems necessary or advisable as we discuss and come to a final conclusion.
Can I ask one other question of the city attorney for clarification? It's my understanding that council can discuss the original proposal because that is what went through the public hearing process at the Planning Commission. We can discuss the alternative proposal because that is a less intensive change than the original proposal, but what we cannot do, without going back through Planning Commission, is add new components to the original proposal or make it more broad or sweeping in its application.
Better, more intensive.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure, we can't be adding more to it or making it more permissive than what was originally proposed?
Oh, thank you. I understand that part. I understand you're considering, then are you considering right now both simultaneously? You have not yet rejected or approved the original.
Right.
So, does that cause me to go into my long and detailed, well, I'm trying to make it brief, but do I need to discuss what I consider defects in the original proposal? I would be delighted if I could move on to the alternate, but I think perhaps I can't.
Yeah. You may do whatever you'd like within the traditional three minutes you have, but I think we have all both seen and read the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting. We also had a work session on Monday where this was discussed, and I think many of the issues involved with the original proposal were brought up by both staff and speakers there. So, you may do that, but I think you could also feel comfortable that we have heard many of, if not every one of the arguments that you might bring forward. And we've received your five-page letter on this as well.
Well, if that's the case, and I think I will do the short and happy version, which is, since the May 16th, since May 16th, the Planning Department has offered two alternative proposals, also numbered, I believe, PCR number 12007 and PCR number 12008. Personally, if we're talking about those numbers as they appear on the right-hand side of the screen, I have no objection to the revisions for the following four reasons. One, the proposed increase in restaurant by-right square footage places a specific square foot limitation on the by-right increase. Two, an applicant for parking requirement reduction would need to demonstrate availability of parking and potential impact on adjoining commercial and residential areas. Three, the proposed parking changes would apply only to the existing LB2 and B3 areas, not to any residentially zoned area. And four, permission for parking requirement reduction would be considered on a case-by-case basis, applicable to only one specific business at a time in response to specific needs. Therefore, I personally support your adoption of the alternate version. If you want to hear what I think about the part on the left, I would proceed, but I think since what you said, I will take happily to think I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your appearance before the Planning Commission as well, and your letter. Anyone else who wishes to speak to this? So, please come forward, state your name and address. Henry, or, okay.
I'm Vic Smith. I live at Counselors Close or Chandler Court. I just want to briefly say that I'm in support of Mrs. Canning. She's done a lot of thorough thought about this. I don't think the original proposal was helpful, and I think the Planning Commission was wise in recommending its dial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Henry Coleman, 606 College Terrace. I do like to respond that I am very pleased that the Planning Department was able to listen to the public and try to incorporate their concerns in the alternate proposal, which I do thoroughly support, and the Planning Department for their efforts. I have only one question, and that is that potential for Sooters Restaurant, as an example, if it should be turned into a restaurant, the amount of parking places required obviously are more than it would be able to provide. Unlike the trellis, the blue tallon, and the other restaurants in Merchant Square, they have not only that parking area, they have a public parking garage, which provides a very large parking space, so that the impact of a restaurant with that type of parking facility available is quite different than turning a building, such as hypothetically Sooters, into a restaurant, because that is directly adjacent to a residential area. And where are those cars going to find themselves parking? I think you can figure that one out. Unless they can afford to buy the old Tyoga motel site as an off-site parking lot, that is not going to happen. So, I would just like to put that out for people to realize that the alternate proposal has much to offer. However, case by case, we'll need to discuss possibly some of the changes of the uses of spaces on the Richmond Road area. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Henry. And anyone else wish to speak to this matter?
I'm Bob Singley with RJF and Associates. Our office is located across the street at Lafayette and Boundary Street. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and other members of council in there. It's been that Sooters has gotten a lot of attention here, and for full disclosure purposes, my firm represents the family that owns that property, and we're trying to market it. I applaud the planning staff on what the duration of what they've been going through the past four months in trying to create two ordinance which would create flexibility, not only which would benefit Sooters, but also the entire Arts District, of which I was on the task force for the Arts Group. The first ordinance, the alternative for the LB2 District, the alternative on that, I support. I'll differ with the other speakers, however, when it comes with regards to the parking district, and the fact that I- district, and the fact that I think the alternate is still too restrictive and doesn't give the flexibility for other uses in that area. I think it should also be inclusive of the geographic area, the RS2 district, which is also in the Arch District itself. It is being excluded underneath the alternate proposal. The issue that I've got is, for example, the Williamsburg Shopping Center, which is incited in one of the memos, they have the flexibility on the basis of one space per 300 square feet of different uses, whether it be restaurant, retail, offices, et cetera, to go on this end of the area. I think you need to treat this entire district as one area in trying to promote the redevelopment of the area in there. The other issue you come down to, and let's cite specifically with regards to Sooters, not that you would be converting into a restaurant use, but if you were to convert it into a retail-type use at five per hundred square feet, that would mean you'd have 28.5 parking spaces. You ran that down to 28. There are not 28 parking spaces on the lot. So therefore, you'd have to go through the SUP process, and if it's for a specific retail use, and let's say it's a soft goods retailer, in which you have a men's shop that's going in there, and that's the individual who's buying it, he goes to the bank to secure financing, the bank lends him the money on the premise of his business being there. And also, when banks lend money, they look at the downside, what if they do go out of business? And if you're dealing with the alternate ordinance here, and a lender was, you're making an application for a loan on it to purchase the property, knowing the fact that your parking requirements might increase twofold, and therefore, you're permitted retail use if you're going from a soft goods, whether it was a men's store, to a dress shop, based upon the proposal here in front of us today as far as the alternate use, you would have to go through the SUP process or the BZA process, which puts you at risk of being denied that use there. And therefore, I would suspect that the lender might question the risk involved in lending it to the ultimate purchaser of the property. Same thing applies whether you go to a soft goods operator, to a hard goods, in which you're going from a men's clothing store to a pottery shop. Pottery shops typically require less parking spaces. You still would have to go through the process in which you would be at risk of being denied the requisite parking for the needs based upon the ordinance. So I would submit to you that the original proposal that was proposed in front of the Planning Commission, which the Planning Commission denied and is in front of you today, that I would like for you all to reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Monty Mason, 12 Bayberry Lane. And you would probably have to go back to high school to find a letter that I'd written that caused this much of a stir. So I wanted to appear as the chairman of the Economic Development Authority to discuss what our thoughts were when we initially approached the subject. Proposal 12007 was not initially in the letter that I wrote to Chairman Driscoll. I find those things to be squarely in the purview of planning staff, our excellent staff and the Planning Commission, and my letter in request did not address those things. My letter in request did address parking for the very reason of consistency. One thing that we've heard on a national scale regarding governmental policy recently is it has led to uncertainty in the business community, which has restrained growth and an economic recovery. That is what we had found here. Our Economic Development Professional and I discussed on a regular basis that she had had multiple prospects come and say, "Well, I'd like to look at this for this opportunity, but unfortunately, I am limited by the parking requirements placed upon the building." Councilman Frilings' question about size really helped me visualize it, but Councilman Pons's question, I think, was extraordinary and on point to the consistency that Mr. Singley speaks to and addresses. You could have the exact same type of business, A, get the approval, B, would have to come through and go through the same process and get the approval. It would not be granted and would not carry over. That's a very difficult thing to explain to a businessman or woman. Mr. Singley brings an extraordinary commercial real estate focus, and has explained that very articulately. So first, I would like to say how much I appreciate and always admire the citizens of this community when they see things that impact their area, how much they care, how much passion and interest they bring to the table. And I applaud the efforts on everyone here who's addressed this and worked towards what has been developed in an alternate proposal. I do, in my initial letter, which addressed 008 in the parking, I do believe that it lacks, the alternate lacks the consistency that we asked for, the consistent application across all areas that was the initial request that we had. I refer to you to one paragraph in the Planning Commission document that really encapsulates our views and mine particularly. "This change would allow great flexibility for existing businesses used for business uses, and since the parking requirement is the same for all uses, uses can be changed between any permitted business use without providing additional off-street parking." This sentence, I appreciate, is probably the nail on the head for me. "It would allow the prime determinant of business uses to be market demand rather than off-street parking requirements, and it would provide additional flexibility for constructing new businesses and buildings in the area." So I appreciate the work the Planning Commission did and applaud the citizens for their involvement, and I ask that particularly on 008, you consider the original proposal for my letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty, and thank you for your work with the EDA.
David Crambyel at 201 Harrison. Well, this discussion has been very, very helpful, and I appreciate what Monty just said, and we're probably all on the same page. We really want to see a vibrant community. We want to see businesses that we like to go to, and we want them to be successful. So if we could go to the first slide, I don't know how you, no, 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 I mean the first proposal, A and B. 07. So it sounds like we're all on the same page, or at least comfortable with the alternate proposal. Let me just make a point here. I agree that the private sector, which is different from government, has done an enormous job in dealing with providing places for students, and the college has done a great job. Private sector and the college is making progress. But let's remember how that came about. It came about, as Paul pointed out, because we had a special use process. Let's remember why we have High Street. Actually, I don't see something so terrible about Walmart, but we had a special use process, and it dealt with parking and traffic and all kinds of issues. And when I think about right to use without getting it too large, like going up by a factor of five or 10 from 1,000, and without reviewing what's actually coming in, there are things that aren't so desirable for me, even if it's a modest size. Tattoo parlor, a loan shop, Hooters could be fun, but I like it where it is, and not in this section of Richmond Road, going from Brooks to the Shopping Center, which is the transition from everything else going out to the west, and as I think we all agree, the most beautiful homes, old homes in Williamsburg, which is one section where we have a sense of a revival based on two recent purchases, one in the 500 block and one in the 600. So I absolutely think that when you're dealing with million-dollar properties, going through a special use permit is just how we actually get the kind of quality that we want. Now, with respect to parking and these other matters, two things need to be come forward. Number one, this street and this small section of our town is right adjacent to some very important neighborhoods. Matoka Court, College Terrace, i.e. Brook Street, a whole set of small streets between Lafayette and Richmond Road, and then further down Nelson, Harrison, My Street, and so forth. What we need to do, and I think we all agree on this, and I'm sure Monty and I agree to a T, we really want to get people living here 12 months out of the year, they could be renting, they could be owning, we prefer owner occupants, but we want, and we want a mix of everything from students to recent college graduates, or whatever kind of graduates, or whatever, young people, middle-aged people, older people, whatever. We want to keep that balance, that mix. And the most important thing that we're not doing too well is putting in incentives, which hopefully some ideas have floated around, I shared some with the mayor, and hopefully that will take off in some ways, so that the stability of College Terrace not only stays but grows, and the stability of Nelson Street, which we won't go through the stories, grows and where some of you live, each of you. We want that to grow. We want property values for single or people who are going to live, I just use the word 12 months, to grow. And so in that one section between Richmond Road and Lafayette, I mean, what we really should be doing is what I call the common sense thing, which is what happened yesterday at the Planning Committee meeting, where we said, "We're not going to put down a specific density. We want somebody to propose what they're going to do and see if the structure, whether the building fronts the sidewalk or says a setback, and what the density is and where it's particularly located and what we're improving, whether it makes sense." And so I kind of agree with Monty. I see the desirability of having everything uniform. But on the other hand, because two critical lots, and it's sort of too bad Sooters isn't 4,800 square feet instead of 5,700, but what can we say? And none of us are going to be too upset about retail and using whatever parking they have, 26 spaces, because it's daytime and whatever. But we still need to have a process where we just don't have a business because we're so desperate for business. We're not desperate for business. We're desperate for having the right business, and a business that is totally right for the street and enhances but not detracts from the neighborhood which it backs up to. That's really critical. So how are you going to do that? As Scott said, we know what we want, but how do we make sure we get what we want? Well, I don't know how you're going to get what you want unless you have some sort of opportunity to at least review. So the alternate parking thing deals with all of the problems we have with the flaky bakery and the cupcake place and everything else, into the timing. I asked Carolyn, "How long does it take to get BZA approval?" There's no cost here. You don't need a lawyer. I mean, you know, you can do it yourself. It takes five weeks because it doesn't meet twice a month. But remember what happens when we ask with special use permits and all these other things. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation, and they make a recommendation within a week. So within a week that you ask for some kind of variation, if the Planning Commission says fine, I mean, the Planning Department, it's going to be recommended as routine approval, so in one week you actually know that you're probably going to pass, because the board doesn't even discuss the things that, unless they want to, that are recommended for approval. When there's a question, then of course it could take the full five weeks, but you'll have that information. The second thing that's important to recognize is that, let's assume you have overflow parking, if it's retail, it's during the day and so forth and whatever, and it's for a finite amount of time, 30 minutes, 60 minutes. But if we start talking about, and I don't think anybody thinks it passed, but we still have to deal with this, if it were to be some kind of a place that served food, either at the Tioga Lot or this lot, then of course, there is no particular parking restriction, it's very minimal, and it's quite logical that you're going to park down the side street. Now, the point is, because I checked this out with Andy Parker here, that actually getting the word from the people who are the experts on this, is that on Saturdays and Sundays you get to park for four hours. So why wouldn't you park in College Terrace if the place were really booming for whatever it is on Saturdays and Sundays? I don't think that creates added stability to College Terrace or to Matoka Court. So, I mean, I'd like to be able to do what Monty says, but the problem I have is that the most important thing, more important than that business, is getting these neighborhoods stronger, and particularly for the same thing on those side streets between Richmond Road and Lafayette. And so we really need to work on figuring out how to revitalize that, and maybe build higher densities if we're going to tidy down some of these old houses, or else get the incentive to repair the house, so a $200,000 house doesn't sort of fall apart and become something else, but it gets, the neighborhood gets revitalized, and people are buying $200,000, $250,000 houses, like one of the people who actually has a shop down on Merchant Square, who I know, and she was looked at a house for $200,000. So, anyway, so I really think that this is fine. If you want to later on knock some of these numbers down, so that we're not reducing from such a big amount, so that some things are more routine, or at least you start out at a, you know, without having to go through, I don't have a problem with that. But I think that having it under certain situations, not having it be at the lower end and for everything in this neighborhood, it just, it doesn't work at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Dennis Kaiser with Matoka Court. And in reference to the alternative proposal, what I would suggest is that if you're going to put something down to the BZA, that I suggest y'all have guidelines in reference to the parking or what they're going to decide, or the board may come up with some unreasonable time restriction or something like that that would kill the deal and would prevent the bank from financing it. So they need some guidelines, guidelines as to what y'all would want and expect.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak to this issue?
Members of the council, Terrence, Wheel, Harry, Tobin, Druck. I've got a lot to say, but I'll just take my 10 minutes, as usual. What really concerned me about the process was that what was proposed by the Planning Commission was basically to do, excuse me, the Planning Department was to do away with the SUPs in this area, including, this is the original, original, including the 10,000 square foot. If it was over 10,000, you had to get a special use permit. In the original proposal, we were doing away with that as well. If citizens hadn't shown up, it's likely that this would have gone through. And so then you ask, "Well, what is an SUP for?" And that's where I'd like to read the statement of intent. Higher intensity uses, so we're in a mixed land use area, but higher intensity uses may be allowed with a special use permit to ensure that the use is compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. So what happened to that? Why did the Planning Department recommend that we just do away with the SUPs? So what I'd like to do is get some balance in this, and I applaud the EDA, and I applaud the Planning Department, but I think their focus is economic, and there's another focus, and that has to do with neighborhoods and that has to do with character. I'd like to recommend that we have a similar authority, perhaps a character preservation authority or neighborhood preservation authority, which would act as an advisory role to yourselves and to planning, so that we don't have this, "Oh, my Lord, look at this proposal, everybody run down." We have a kind of a catfight, and then we come to a, I think if we had that sort of thing, we might have had the alternate proposal come through initially. I'd also like to point out that it's sort of put out from an economic point of view that, gee, if we make these changes, we'll get a lot of business. There's a lot of business vacant now and available, including the Triangle Restaurant, the pizza place in the Triangle that closed down. There was a hairdresser that closed down, that's available. There's the Brick House that's just going up now. There's the next door to the Brick House, I think I'm saying that correctly. There's, of course, four new restaurants in Tribe Square. There's the Pub on Merchant Square. There's the Pub on Merchant Square. There's room in the Riverside, the Medical Building. There's room down the street in the Board. There's room in the building on the corner. So we're relaxing rules in this area. Are we being fair to these other places that are needing business as well and are looking for tenants as well? So that concerns me as well. So I really, we all love Williamsburg. We want it to be economically viable, but we need some balance on the discussion. And listening yesterday at the Planning Commission meeting, there's going to be a lot of discussion coming up on this comprehensive plan. But one thing they did do right, and many things, but one thing in particular was, they recommended that we table this process and use the ongoing comprehensive plan process that is ongoing right now and discuss all these issues. These are very complicated issues. And lastly, if I may, from, in the discussions of the Arts District, this was on the page on the website where it says, "The city might look at whether loosening the zoning or ARB regulations would assist the district." So you're giving notice of that. "Any change codes would affect property owners' land use. Any proposed changes would need to be balanced with the high-quality aesthetic and reputation that Williamsburg enjoys, as well as the charm of this area of the city." So are we doing that? And lastly, "If it even looks like changes are needed, the city would rely on feedback from property owners and their tenants and prospects as part of considering this and in identifying any need for it." So the process was somewhat rushed. Again, back to process, I don't know that we did ask the people and the tenants, and what do you think and does this look like a good idea? And lastly, on the parking, if I may, the Williamsburg Shopping Center is a number of businesses. There's retail and there's restaurants, and that's why it's 300, you know, per parking space. But it's not the same as having a restaurant and saying that somehow that's all balanced out because they have many different kinds of businesses, so it averages out to that particular scale. So like us to remember that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Anybody else wish to, let's see.
Sure.
Okay. Henry.
I appreciate your indulgence. I would just have a very brief comment to make. Special use permit is just what it says. If a bank is halfway intelligent, and many of us wonder today whether they are, before you would be willing to lock down a loan, you would see whether the business proposed would be able to do what they want to do in the space they are proposing. And if that means a special use permit, that does not mean it is impossibility. What it means is you have to do your homework. They have not been doing it. All we are asking is if this building needs a special use permit, then go ahead and do the process. And if the bank is willing to loan you that money before you have, that is not our responsibility. Hopefully, they have learned something. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak before I, yeah, Mr. Singley, please?
I think he was addressing a point that I evidently didn't make very well, and that is, a bank does do its homework. They lend the money to the person that's buying the building and putting the retail shop there. However, you have to look at the downside. The downside is that individual does not make his payment, he's not successful, and therefore the bank has a first deed of trust on the property, and they institute foreclosure proceedings. Now they end up with the property back, but they can't use the more intense use of retail use because of the fact that they might have to go, they will have to go back in front of the BZA or an SUP process in order to get adequate parking to be used for retail purposes. And that's what the point that I was making. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
David Cramby, 201 Harrison. We all want Suter's to be successful, but we shouldn't be zoning based on Suter's size and where it's going. And I would be totally in favor of a special vote that Suter's is allowed to go retail and the parking will be whatever, but that should be separate from how we vote on these two decisions. I think there'd be a lot of support to having Suter's be retail and whatever we deal with parking. But let's not make our plans for the street based on a single property. We all want Suter's to be sold and successful.
Great. Thank you very much. Last call. Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Why are you looking at me? Yeah, this is, I see both sides of, I think, well, I'm willing to say that on the LB2 proposal, the alternative version is the one that I would support and not the original. So I'm going to confine my comments to the parking issue. And I see both sides, I see clearly what both sides are saying. And I also understand that the whole thing came from a letter from the EDA asking for a more consistent approach to parking challenges in the area. And I can appreciate the uncertainty of the BZA hearing or whether it goes through PC or City Council. That unknown can create problems for potential business making a decision to invest in and locate in the community. I also understand the concerns of the residents and how they don't want their neighborhoods overwhelmed by parking from these businesses or just their quality of life compromised by the additional traffic and people parking on the streets. So I kind of want them both. So I have a question for Mr. Nestor. Under the alternative proposal for LB2, the, and it seems like what we're really talking about here is restaurant parking primarily. There's a 2,500 square foot limitation for restaurant use, and any more floor area in a restaurant would require a special use permit.
Correct.
Right. It makes me wonder if there's not some middle ground where, and I don't know how this is even possible, so if it's not, I'll just pass to Scott. If the 2,500 square foot limitation can be granted by right, can the parking at 1 per 100 or 1 per 400 go with that by right use up to 2,500 square feet? And if a restaurant comes in that's greater than 2,500 square feet, where they're going to go through the special use permit process anyway, and a restaurant that size or larger than that size is going to be a more intensive use than a smaller restaurant, because the smaller restaurants simply aren't going to have the seating capacity for very much business. Is there a way then to consider the parking in that larger restaurant as part of the SUP and not by right grant the 1 per 400?
There are, there are several ways that that could be addressed. You could have a parking, if you moved away from a uniform parking requirement, you could have a parking requirement for a small restaurant that was different than the parking requirement for a large restaurant. But if you need a special use permit for a restaurant larger than 2,500 square feet, you go through the special use permit process. And the special use permit process says council may impose reasonable standards as deemed necessary to protect the public interest and welfare. Such standards may include, and number six is additional off-street parking or loading requirements. So within the context of the special use permit process, if it was felt that a large, if you had a lower parking requirement for restaurants or a uniform lower requirement, and it was felt through the special use permit process that more parking was needed, the zoning ordinance specifically list is something that could be required as a part of the special use permit process is more parking, and of course, that would mean if they didn't have the more parking that was felt necessary, that could be grounds for not granting the special use permit because it's, the use is too intensive for where it's proposed.
So if we adopt, well, I'm not saying what we're going to do, but, so any restaurant require, or any restaurant over 2,500 square feet will go through the special use permit process, parking is going to be considered as part of that, and we get the same benefit as we would if we imposed the, or offered the alternate proposal option of a reduction of parking requirements, just coming at it from a different direction.
Right. It is clearly within the purview of Planning Commission and council review to say for a special use, for use requiring a special use permit, that the way this is proposed, you don't have the parking you need for a restaurant, so we're not going to approve it. Or you could require, if they had the space but needed to put it in, you could require more parking. So I think the ordinance, the special use permit section of the ordinance is very clear that council has that authority to require more parking, or if the more parking isn't there, to not approve the special use permit.
Thank you. That's all I have to say. Scott?
Well, I'm going to take the alternate track of Paul and start with parking. I'm comfortable with the original proposal for parking, and I'll go back into that in a second. I'm fine with, with certain points on the alternate proposal for LB2, but want to pay particular attention to Mr. Singley's point about any special use permit, permission running with the property. Because I think if you're applying for a special use permit and the Planning Commission and City Council understands that that use runs with the property, that is adequate consideration for, for that benefit, you know, it's a, that's, I think that's more than adequate.
Let me follow, do you mind if I ask either Chris or Reed, I don't know who, is that possible in the SUP process to grant it to the property rather than to the particular business? What's?
City Council can grant it to the extent that they want to grant it. So if they want to grant it for the property, I would suggest that the property owner be the one petitioning and not the business. But if they wanted to limit it to that particular business, council could also do that.
Yeah, okay. Reed, would you?
Let me give you an example. City Green, when that was approved, they had two restaurant spaces, which became Qdoba and Domino's. When it was approved, and they were larger than 1,000 square feet, so they needed a special use permit. They had the parking they needed for the restaurants. The special use permit approval was for the uses, it was approved for two restaurant spaces, and there were two retail spaces between the restaurants. We didn't know at that point what the restaurants were, but because the restaurants met the parking requirement, it was felt during that particular special use permit proposal that we knew the size of the restaurants and they had the parking, so it didn't matter in that particular interest instance what the specific restaurant was. So the way that is set up, Qdoba could change to whatever, or Domino's could change to whatever, as long as they're just occupying the same square footage, they have the parking they need to meet the zoning requirements. So that's an example of how that was done.
So the short answer is it's possible.
So it does that?
Yeah, that's satisfactory. Point's been made multiple times today, but, you know, since I've been on council, this stretch of Richmond Road has kind of been an itch you can't scratch. And until the Arts District, that's really the first hint at any sort of cohesive identity. These places are kind of looking for a toehold, and one of the tools we have is creating value in that, in that area, and there's extreme value in certainty, you know? If a person brings an idea to that district, it's a lot easier for someone like Michelle to point and say, you know, you can do that there, but maybe is a pretty scary word when there's a lot of money on the line. And particularly, you know, under the umbrella of the Arts District, we're talking about arts-type businesses having to go through a three-month permitting process, which for even sophisticated businesses can cost $10,000 to $15,000 in engineers and attorneys' fees, that's a pretty significant deterrent. And say it is a private person, not every, I mean, I don't hear, for most of the folks that go before the BZA, and that's not something they sign up to do on a regular basis, as I said on Monday. So I think we need to be particularly mindful of those impediments, especially in an area that's, you know, looking to catch on as much as this one is. As far as LB2 goes, I'm fine with most everything except for the 2,500 square foot limitation on the restaurant. Since we went from no floor limitation to restaurant use, I think we ought to at least make it consistent with retail. Because that adds, to bolster Mr. Singley's point again, that adds certainty for the future of a building if it does go through some process.
Thanks.
Gosh, thank you, thank you, everybody, for coming. A lot of good discussion. As one who voted against the Arts District, this conversation reminds me of some of the challenges that I pointed out then that we would have, and that is a negative impact on the neighborhoods. And I think lots of people have talked to that. But with that said, you know, I'm not willing to punt on the Arts District. I think it's here. I think there's lots of people that have spent a lot of time on it, there's good merit to it, and we need to do what we can to make it successful. I think what's come through here now in the alternative proposal, particularly since both the District and the Parking District have carved out the residential portion, makes better sense to me, even though I still think there's some consequence in overflow parking and that type of thing. But in a vibrant community, you're going to see that type of, you know, living. It's going to happen. And I think many of the residents there have off-street parking, they can park in the driveway. So while it may be some, some negative impact, you know, they can work with it. I'm comfortable with going back to putting back in all the SUPS of the alternative proposal. I'd be willing to hear more about Councilman Foster's discussion about square foot limitations on some retails and restaurant space, rather. But in terms of the parking, I got to say I like Alternative 2's proposal. But that says, you know, Mr. Singley's point is, was my point early on is, you know, how do you convince a bank to be your partner if the bank doesn't have security and what to do with that, with that real estate in that building beyond the first applicant? I mean, there's a challenge there. So, you know, there has to be some compromise, and we have to be flexible to make this happen. And this isn't the answer that's going to solve the challenge of the Arts District. I mean, there's still, you know, once college is out, there's very few cars that traverse that area of Richmond Road. It's very dependent on students and faculty who drive up and down that road. You go there today, it's not a ghost town, but it isn't what it is when school's in session. And so there's a need to bring more traffic into the area. And once you get more traffic in the area to support these businesses, then you have other impacts. And I think we should be mindful of that, that discussion with coming down the road, I'm sure. So where I stand today, you know, I think leaving the LB2 District or carving out the residential is the appropriate way to do it. I'm still up in the air in terms of parking on, and how to handle that. I'm still up in the air in terms of parking on and how to handle that.
Thanks, Doug. Judy?
First thing I want to do is thank the staff. I think this has turned into an enormous amount of work that nobody expected it to turn into, just like Monty didn't expect his letter to generate what it did. So I think the staff has done outstanding job. Second, I can go along with the LB2 alternate and I agree with Councilman Foster that the restaurant space ought to equal the retail space. I think that's probably a good plan. On the third issue, the parking issue, one of the speakers mentioned that this area needs revitalization. Well, that is exactly why we passed the arts district. That's what we wanted to do was to revitalize this part of Williamsburg. We all know there are problems there, we're working on it. The EDA sent a proposal that would help the arts district and I think it would help the arts district and I think we need to support the EDA, I think we need to support the original parking proposal because it does what we want it to do. We, it does help the district. I don't think the consequences are going to be as dire as, in fact, I, I hope we get more traffic. As Councilman Pond said, what we need in that area is a little more pe, a little more traffic, a little more people going, a little more going to the businesses there, a little more life and vitality, and I think this will do it. And so I would, I think the original proposal is probably a good one in terms of the parking.
Rick, thank you, Judy. Okay, let, let me see if I can sort of summarize where I think, think what, what, this is what I've heard. There are really sort of three issues here we might need to think about. The first is the LB2. Reed, would you put that? What, what I'm hearing from council is that there's a consensus that the alternative proposal for the LB2 district, LB2 district is, is, you know, that's, that's where we are. There is a question of whether the restaurant should be 5,000 or 2,500, but that, so is that a fair sense of where we are? On the parking, first, I think I'm hearing a consensus that people like the new map versus the old map, so this map versus the original. Is that?
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. Okay, so there's unanimity on that. The parking, what I'm hearing is most speaking toward the preferring the original, although there's some interest in, in the alternative proposal. I think Mr. Freiling's question helped me quite, quite a bit, understanding that if you went with the original proposal on parking, but the alternative on the LB2, that LB2 requirement would require an SUP process and that SUP process essentially can address parking as, as an issue. So if, if the original proposal parking was felt to be too much, you could essentially require additional parking as part of the SUP. If that's what I understood your answer to be.
Can I have one point of clarification?
Yeah, one, yeah.
I'm not sure between the original and the alternate, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying we should go to eliminate the .25 visitor parking space per multifamily unit.
Yeah.
I'm only talking about the business aspect.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, I don't want, I'm not speaking for anybody else.
Well, I guess that might be a question to ask, what, what, where do people feel on, on the multifamily unit? Is that something?
Under the, under the alternate proposal, all multifamily dwellings require special use, so you essentially can put in the parking restriction just as you are for what Mr. Nester just pointed out. You can fold.
So you'd have the option of?
You have, you have that option under the special use permit to consider that.
That's, yeah, well, so.
It's there.
So why would we eliminate it?
Yeah, that's.
I mean, can, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Maybe Mr. Mason or Mr. Witt could help me. Was the multifamily parking question part of the EDA request?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we could just take it out?
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't see why we need to put that in.
Would anybody object if that were taken out of the proposal?
It's not critical.
Which, which means that, back, back to, I think where we are, the LB2, the alternative with a question about the, the size of the restaurant, the new map versus the original map and on, on the parking, the original proposal with the multifamily unit taken out, so that, that means there's one question to address.
Right to your left.
Yes.
Just trying to, so what I hear, I think you're saying is, is we're going to, you're considering the original proposal going to 100 to 400 per restaurants as it's outlined there, streamlining it.
But if, if, going back to, to the LB2, if somebody wanted a restaurant more than 2,500 square feet, they would have to get an SUP and as part of the SUP process, a higher level of off-street parking could be required. That's one of the elements that could be changed in, in the SUP. So it's, it's, and in fact, it, it in effect creates that, you know.
Review.
A review process.
Sure.
So basically, this would really help the Cupcake Place, the Flaky Bakery, a small, the art gallery that might want to have.
The smaller.
The smaller.
Business that wants to offer food service.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is kind of, which is the vision we have for that area, smaller retail, smaller little restaurant shops, quaint atmosphere.
And that's one reason why I'd be hesitant. We currently have an SUP requirement, Mr. Nester will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, that of any restaurant over 1,000 square feet. So we're looking at taking it to 2,500 square feet. I'm a little hesitant to go to 5,000 square feet at this point because then that takes out that, that parking review on the, on the larger restaurant.
Exactly, yeah.
And I, I think your point is that my vision of the arts district and I think our vision is that we're talking about smaller, independent, single operator businesses that tend not to be the larger facility.
Right, a bit more dependent on foot traffic.
Exactly.
But to the point of foot traffic, these people are parking and walking, which is different than a upper Richmond Road-type restaurant where those people are driving, parking, eating, getting back in their cars and leaving. So the fact that it's a walking-type district actually decreases the need for additional parking, especially in the 10- to 15-year vision of people walking from downtown to the arts district as hopefully what will become one contiguous corridor. The reason I suggested going to 5,000 is because we have existing infrastructure that could be lumped in there. You're not excluding what already exists, as I said before, which is kind of looking for its own, it's seeking a purpose. So I, I, and I feel it's, it's easier to market, you know, if it's consistent.
And, and again, nothing that was in the LB2 proposal was part of what the EDA asked for.
Exactly.
There is that, right, yeah.
Do you want to clarify about that?
Yeah.
If I may.
The EDA did discuss this yesterday at its regularly scheduled meeting and they, they do feel that the limitation on a restaurant, 1,000 square foot limitation kicking in the SUP needs to be raised.
Right, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Which this, the alternative does to, to 2,500, I think the question is, is that high enough and?
I thought you said we didn't ask for that, but?
Yeah.
We did, okay.
Not to 5,000.
Yeah, but, yeah, we, I, I guess we, let's see if we can, I think we've got agreement on everything but one point and that's sort of the 2,500 versus 5,000 for the restaurant. Let's see if we can reach agreement on that.
If you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
You know.
I don't know.
Mr. Witt, would you mind to provide your broad reasoning for, or how you normally go about business as far as, from an economic development perspective on this type of restriction?
Sure. So from an economic development perspective, of course, the original proposal is what we would want because we want the least amount of regulation to work with our businesses facing that uncertainty that a couple of our speakers have talked about. Having said that, though, we've, the initial letter from Chairman Mason didn't go this broad, so we, we need to keep it in with those confines. So the issue we typically find with a prospect for the arts district is they're a very small business, they're often a startup business, which is what we imagined happening in that district. And as someone mentioned in the audience, there's quite a bit of retail space available in the greater Richmond area. So we find ourselves competing with other localities or other locations, even with, you know, within shopping centers or, or different areas of the greater Williamsburg area who don't, who allow these uses by right. And so if you're a small business with very little funding anyway and you're working with the bank to try to get, this uncertainty of going through an SUP process is, is very frightening to them and, and we often have the one conversation and don't get any farther than that. So I, I think y'all probably intuitively know that. I mean, I heard a few people talk about Walmart or even a large developer who comes in with a 10,000 square foot building in this area will have more of the resources to deal with the SUP. But I think when you're talking 5,000 square feet or less, that's where it can become prohibitive.
Is that?
That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Right. Thanks.
Well, going back, now I'm thinking, I'm almost okay with the 2,500 square feet because if we're talking about smaller, quinnier type atmosphere, there's very few spaces that are, that are over 2,500 square feet in that district unless you talk about a total redevelopment of something. Sooters is over 5,000, so that, that kind of takes it out of the, the equation. You know, any one of the, the old homes that's been converted to an office typically isn't over 2,500 square feet, so I'm almost comfortable leaving it there.
Sounds like three people to me.
You're comfortable with the 2,500?
I am.
Can, can you live with that, Scott?
Well, I can live with it, but you know my opinion.
With that, I think we have a consensus that the alternative proposal for the LB2 district, we have an agreement, we have an agreement with this, we have an agreement on the map being this, and the only further question is, is the parking and the majority seems to favor the original proposal, is, is that something everyone?
With the elimination.
With the elimination of, of the multi-use family, eliminating that, eliminating the elimination. Is, is that something everyone can live with or? Okay. Okay, I would ask for a proposal that, Ms. Shelton, is that possible for us to move forward in that way?
Well, you need to, to do that in the context of the proposed ordinances with the motion, so.
So the, the first one would be the, the LB2 district and there it would be a proposal to go with the alternative proposal. And then the midtown parking would have to have two parts, one dealing with the change in the map and the other dealing with the, the original proposal with the elimination of the multifamily. Is that, okay. Would anybody like to grant that?
I'm trying to get the numbers straight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I will move the adoption of, I believe it's, proposed ordinance 12-11B.
Can, can we just call them what they are on the screen?
That's alternate proposal for, for the LB.
LB2.
LB2.
Reed, Reed, is that, that, so, so 12-11B is the alternative proposal? That's right.
For LB2.
For LB2.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Oh, do I have to?
I'm Doug.
I'll clap for me.
Ms. Nudson.
Hi.
Mr. Pond.
Hi.
Mayor Holm.
Hi.
Mr. Freiling.
Hi.
And Mr. Foster.
Ah. Okay, thanks. Okay, now for the midtown parking district, it would be proposed ordinance 12-12A with modifications of the map and the elimination of the elimination, right?
So much.
Chris, how, how should we, how, how specifically do we need to state that?
I, I think your motion is to approve proposed ordinance 12-12A, eliminating the 0.25 visitor parking spaces per multifamily unit and limiting the parking district to those shown on the map and would be the LB2.
LB2 and B3.
And B3, LB2 and B3 districts, okay.
Yeah, that's what I.
Ms. Scott, did you get that as a motion?
Yes.
That's what I said.
That's what Paul said, do we have a second?
Judy did.
A second, Ms. Scott, call the roll, please.
Ms. Nudson.
Hi.
Mr. Pond.
Hi.
Mayor Holm.
Hi.
Mr. Freiling.
Hi.
Mr. Foster.
Ah.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone who came and spoke, I want to thank the Planning Commission for, for this process, I want to thank staff again for the, the work they've done. I think this is exactly the way public, the public decisions need to be made with discussion, input, discussion, input, discussion, and finally reaching a consensus and I think we reached what I think is a, a good decision and I'd like to thank my fellow council members for helping us get there. Okay, our next order of business in public hearings is PCR-12, 12-14, and that's a quick claim deed of easement at 335 and 337 Burns Lane. Mr. Nester?
Yes, I might as well make it three presentations this afternoon. This is coming to council not for approval of a re-subdivision of this property because that's an administrative approval that is done by the planning department. But there is a easement exchange required to allow relocation of sewer and for, that requires council approval and for that to be done, the state code requires that there be a public hearing held. That being the case, I've shown on the map where the Weissmiller's lots are located, 335 and 337 Burns Lane, just past the cul-de-sac in the public street actually goes down to this point. And this is the detail of the proposal. The existing house and the existing lot line is here. What they are proposing to do to create a more buildable area on this lot is to move the lot line over closer to the existing house, reducing the size of that lot but still meeting all the zoning ordinance requirements, increasing the size of this lot, which now is this area. But this increased lot has the existing sanitary sewer line going through here. So what is proposed is that when prior to a house being built on that site, the sewer line, instead of going straight this way, there's an existing line along the back, instead of going straight down to tie in, it would go this way and then this way to tie in and the sewer line in this yellow area would be abandoned and the easement would be abandoned once the new sewer line is built and accepted by the city. So what is being exchanged here is in exchange for this new easement, which would be recorded when the re-subdivision plat is approved, council would agree that, you know, when the sewer line is constructed and accepted, that this yellow area would be vacated and council would quitclaim that. that this yellow area would be vacated, and council would quitclaim that. So, but, and that, that approval on the change to the easement is required to create a buildable area on the new lot. But council's approval does not approve the new lot. That would be approved by Planning Department approval if the easements are approved, easement swap is approved by council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nestor. Any questions at this point?
I just have one question. I'm just curious, Mr. Nestor, if I could, and I don't think this is really, it doesn't impact my decision, I'm just interested how this works. This makes perfect sense to me. Are there slope issues with the lot that require any kind, I mean, let me take that back. This lot was, the original lot was put in place before there were Chesapeake Bay issues or?
Yeah, these lots predated the Chesapeake Bay regulations, and there, there's a stream down here, the required 100-foot R P A buffer goes here, and here's the front lot line. So, most, because we have two existing lots here, and the property line is merely being relocated a little bit, the zoning administrator has authority to allow encroachment into the upper 50 feet of the Chesapeake Bay area, provided it's the minimum encroachment that's needed to build a house there, and.
And that is all doable?
That, yeah, this, the upper 50 feet is here, so you, you know, I'd say you would have a house that would be closer to the front to reduce the encroachment in there. But it is doable with, with the approval of the zoning administrator within the parameters we have the work.
I just want to make sure we weren't going down a path that sets an expectation that couldn't be realized, so that's helpful. Thank you.
One other, the little, so, the little dotted line inside the new lot, that's, that's the buildable area?
The.
Yeah, that.
Well, here, this is the required 15-foot side yard, and this is the required 35-foot front yard, and then, well, the 15-foot side yard is really a 30-foot side yard over here because of the sanitary sewer easement. So, you theoretically have this as a possible building area, although it's more likely going to be pushed down to the front.
Right, yeah, okay, that's helpful, thank you. Scott, any questions?
Just, the expense of moving the sewer line will be borne by?
The property owner.
The property owner, okay. So, there really isn't any expense to the city other than some time.
Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone who wishes to speak to the quick claim deed of easement for 335 and 337 Burns Lane. If you wish to speak, please come forward.
Yes, I'm Ron Weissmiller, and I appreciate the effort that the city has put in, and I appreciate the opportunity to come in. As it stands right now, it's not a buildable lot. Once this is done, it becomes a buildable lot, and it has virtually negligible impact on any of my existing neighbors. And I have talked with them, one in particular was more concerned about green space truthfully than anything else, but has very little impact on the Burns Lane area.
Great, thank you very much. Would anybody else wish to speak to the issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that City Council approve and authorize staff to execute the attached quick claim deed and deed of easement for 335 and 337 Burns Lane.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Okay. Brings us to our next order of business, which is reports. Ms. Miller, nice to see you sitting there.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
Is that good evening or good afternoon?
We're getting closer. First is the monthly financial statements, anything in particular you?
Just wanted to, nothing in particular, but just wanted to mention that we're 11 months into our current year budget. Operating fund revenues are ahead of expenditures at about $250,000 range. We'll have more of a precise number next month when we talk about where we are on a cash basis as we end the fiscal year, so. But we're happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions? Okay. Not monthly departmental operating reports, anything in particular?
Nothing to highlight, but glad to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions?
I just wanted to mention that I went to the fire department display that was outside the museum, and it was wonderful. It was really, and the people there were great with explanations and stuff. It was a good thing to do for the city.
I understand Chief Damp with the star in the Hennings Auditorium as well, so thank you guys for doing, and thank you for bringing out, is it a 1937 or 47?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, it was almost, thank you for bringing that out, making that part of it. I think that for lots of people there, that was a highlight as well. And as well as your new engine, which is also pretty neat, but thank you guys for doing that, it's really nice. Okay, that brings us to city manager reports. We have three. The first is the Virginia Retirement System Certification, and this is something we discussed Monday at our work session. Ms. Miller?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be giving the brief on this. Recent legislation calls for localities to make certain decisions by July 1st, 2012, regarding employer and member V R S retirement contributions. The city must approve the employer contribution rate for its retirement plan and also must concur with the school division's option for its retirement plan for the biennium beginning July 1st, 2012. The city must also certify the mandated V R S 5% employee contribution and related salary offset, so the attached resolutions would provide this certification. The recommendation is that council approve proposed resolutions 12-09 and 12-10 certifying the employer contribution rates for the city and the school division, and approve resolution 12-11 approving the mandated 5% employee V R S contribution and the offsetting salary increase. And this just reflects what's in the adopted budget.
Right, okay. Any questions for?
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve proposed resolutions 12-09 and 12-10 certifying employer contribution rates for the city of Williamsburg and Williamsburg James City County School Division, and approve resolution 12-11 approving the mandated 5% employee V R S contribution and offsetting salary increase.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Ms. Scott, you've become much more tentative going through the roll.
The second city manager report is a supplemental appropriation for the General Assembly Fund and Sales Tax Fund.
Mr. Sarah will give the staff report.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of council. It's necessary to amend the fiscal year 2012 budget for the general fund and the sales tax fund before the close of the year for a few of the grants we've received during the year, particularly the general fund. We want to adjust expenditures and revenues, $283,748 in total. One of those, let me back down. The first one, the largest item is for costs associated with Hurricane Irene cleanup last September. So, $275,400 has been approved as being eligible cost for that. We have a safety grant of $4,000 that was received in September, and that was used for various fire and recreation equipment costs, and another fire department program training grant of $4,348 that was also used. In the sales tax fund, we want to adjust that budget $19,000 to accommodate FEMA grant that was received in October for a fire alarm system. So, we're asking that you approve proposed resolution 12-12 to adjust the budgets for the current year.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a comment, is this one of the more enjoyable resolutions that we get to pass?
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that council approve proposed resolution 12-12.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Final city manager report is agent for sale or lease of Lord Paget property.
Mayor, Mr. Witt will give the presentation for this item. Mr. Mayor, members of council, here to discuss the Lord Paget property and the request that staff go through a qualification process, a public process, to find a commercial broker to list the property. But I also want to fill you in on, we do have two active prospects right now who, who came to the city, or we found. One came to us through a broker, one we found, so this listing agreement with a future agent would exempt these prospects from any commission. Of course, we would need to honor a commission on the broker who brought us that, that one prospect that we're talking to, but I just wanted to give you that update that we're promising that there are two prospects, both talking about adaptive reuse, not demolition at this point, but we're requesting council's nod to go forward with the R F Q to list it with an agent.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Witt?
With, with two prospects and the prospects of having more prospects, is there an urgency to do this? I mean, if we sat on it for not doing anything for a couple of months, do you think it'd be that detrimental?
Um.
And what's the real benefit of doing it?
Sure, the benefit is hopefully getting to the finish line faster, not only in identifying prospects, but once the prospect is identified, completing the negotiation with them. A professional broker could, could manage that process much faster than, to be honest, staff that already have very, very full plates. So, we just think a broker could get to the finish line faster. In terms of already having two prospects, I always say only one out of 10 prospect usually hits the finish line, so if I had 10 prospects or not, I might feel a little better, but with only two, I think it's wise to move forward.
If one of the two prospects that are going to be exempt doesn't go through, through the broker, does, and we have a broker, does that defeat the purpose? I mean, could that broker help us with one of these two prospects?
I think that could be negotiated if the one, the, in terms of getting us to that, through that negotiation process faster, I think it would certainly happen at a lower commission since they didn't bring the prospect, but I think that's a great suggestion to, for us to include in any contract with a broker.
Any further questions?
I would agree with that condition.
Yeah. So, you will, you will add that to your?
To, to any contract with a successful broker that we list with.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you think that's?
Clearly, I mean, obviously, we provided the prospects, so there would be a lower commission.
Muchly, yeah.
Right, and so, you, do you feel comfortable in negotiating that with whoever, whatever broker may come?
Yes, I think we would, we'd identify confidentially and exclude those prospects, but put them under contract to help us negotiate the legal contract with those prospects at a, at a much lower, I mean, more of a fee than a commission at that point. Is that what I'm, am I hearing that correctly?
Well, I would offer, if you think that's beneficial, there's no, yeah.
I think that was a very.
And I would include it somehow.
Thank you, that's an excellent suggestion.
It's the least I can do.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city authorize the city manager into, into the listing agreement discussed here following a competitive process for sale and lease of the Lord Paget property.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Witt, very nice. Next item on the agenda is city attorney reports. We have one, and this is an amendment to the cigarette tax ordinance.
Last month, City Council adopted a new cigarette tax rate. The city code needs to be amended as a result of that adoption in the budget. The adoption in the budget is adequate to change the tax rate. We need to avoid having a conflict, however, in the city code and the tax rate that was adopted. Staff is suggesting that council not include this precise rate in the city code, but instead provide that the rate will be determined by council, so at a future time, if council decides to adjust the rate again, we don't have to go back and change the city code again. The other provision in the proposed ordinance is a change that is mandated by the legislative package passed by the General Assembly, which requires that local cigarette stamp tax, stamps themselves, or the technology used to stamp the cigarette packs be the same as that, that the state uses. This is for future as well, because currently, the city does use the same technology that the state does, but when the state changes their technology, this just mandates that the city then at that point would have to change their technology too. So, with that, I can answer any questions that you have. Stack recommendation is for council to adopt proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Any, any questions on this? I'll take a motion.
I move that City Council adopt proposed ordinance 12-13.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Mr. Friling?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next order of business is unfinished business, and we have none, I believe. That brings us to our penultimate, which is new business, and we have two. The first is a purchase contract for three parcels in York County.
I'm going to give this report because city manager, dear, and this, this happened For several weeks, city staff has been negotiating with Dr. and Mrs. Darst regarding the purchase of three parcels of property that they own near the watershed, and Mr. Clayton has put on the board in front of you the watershed in total, and Dan, can you point out where, can you go back to the original map and point out where this is, and you can make the little, yeah? There are three parcels that total about 10 acres on the upper end of the watershed, and Dan, you can go to the next map. And those are more detailed, a more detailed map showing where those properties are. This is a purchase for, proposed purchase for $105,600. The contract does require a hazardous substance assessment, and the city has a certain amount of time to do that. If any hazardous materials are found on the site, then the property owner has the option of removing those, or the city can back out of this purchase in the event that that's found. The only thing that's a little bit different about this contract is that Dr. and Mrs. Darst many years ago now granted a conservation easement on the property next to, and Dan's circling, the property next to this. And in granting that easement, they reserved for themselves a 25-foot right of ingress and egress over the property in order to access what is in the middle on the next lot. But they never, there's never been any plat or any specific deed reference that locates that 25 feet over the city's conservation easement. And so, what this contract does is locate that 25 feet next to another 12-foot right-of-way, so that would be a 37-foot right-of-way, that they would have then the ability to access that middle lot through a piece of property where the city already has an existing confirmation, conservation easement. This is not granting them anything that they haven't already reserved to themselves, it's just simply locating it. And so, the city is part of this, is agreeing that when Dr. and Mrs. Darst, or their successor in titles, bring a plat that's acceptable to the city showing this location, that the city won't unreasonably withhold its approval of that, and will enter into the agreement locating that access point there. So, that's the only thing that's unusual about this agreement, otherwise, it's a pretty standard purchase contract. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has. Dan Clayton is very familiar with this, and he's able to answer questions, and so is Ms. Miller.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for?
Question, just a comment. I think all along, in this particular area, the city's concern was preventing the aggregation of property and that thereby allowing a bigger, more intensive use than could be accomplished on the individual lots, and this seems to help complete that by breaking up the whole, I think of them as cigarette lots, but that whole parcel. And I think it's also worth noting, I don't think it's inaccurate to say that the Darsts have been great friends of the Waller Mill watershed, and even though this is a contract for purchase, the entire city should be grateful to them for all that they've done and helped us accomplish those goals.
Thank you. Scott?
Dan, do you know approximately what the functional width of those strips are? About, about 150 feet. So, yeah. That, that really breaks up any, any real use of the strips in between.
Also, the, by the way, the county's also running water and sewer lines out here, so the value of this property is going to increase quite a bit.
Got you.
And the Darst did agree, like Mr. Friling was saying, they're good friends of the city, and they agreed to sell the property for the assessed value.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further?
I just wanted to comment that during the budget process, we were told over and over, we should go into reserves. And here's a wonderful example of why we need to have reserves.
Great.
So.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, I'll come back for a proposed, uh, ordinance, uh, motion.
We're all getting a little tired.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that city council authorize the city manager to execute the attached proposed contract for the purchase of three parcels in York County belonging to Henry Jackson Darst and Ann Darst.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Final new business is appointments to boards and commissions. I believe we have a few.
I think maybe even more than a few. Mr. Mayor, I move that effective July 1st, 2012, city council appoint Tom Mayner to the Colonial Group Home Commission for a four-year term to expire June 30, 2016. Kira Cook to the Library Board for a four-year term to expire June 30, 2016. Bob Leek to the Arts Commission for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2015. And Susan Branch Smith to the Arts Commission for a one-year term to expire June 30, 2013. Also, effective July 1st, I move that city council reappoint Edith Chutko to the Colonial Behavioral Health Board for a three-year term to expire June 30, 2015. William Carr and Thomas Gilman to the Economic Development Authority for four-year terms to expire June 30, 2016. Gwen Williams and Robert Taylor to the Finance and Audit Committee for two-year terms to expire June 30, 2014. And Estherine Moeller and Carl Ross to the Social Services Board for four-year terms to expire June 30, 2016. And that is all. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Holman.
Aye.
Mr. Friling.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Our final order of business for our meeting today is open forum. This is a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you wish to come forward, please state your name and address and address council. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Sophia Harler. I own a business here in Williamsburg Colonial Connections, a receptive tour operator. I come to you today to talk to you about the pedicab issue. I would like to request that council actually seek some advice and work with the tour companies in Williamsburg about the pedicabs and get some of our ideas about it. We do have some concerns and just would like for you to take in consideration some of our, our stances as far as working within the city as with tour guides and when you start working with the guide ordinance and making those changes.
Great. Great. Thank you very much, and, and we will follow up on that. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for sitting for three hours.
Anybody else wish to address the city on any, any matter? If not, I'll.
Can I just say something? Can I address council?
Yes.
I just think it's worth noting that just about an hour ago, a little less than that, a ceremony started out on the grounds of the Capitol to naturalize just about 100 new citizens of this country. And I just think that's a terrific thing and something that, that we should be proud of, that twice a year that happens in Williamsburg, and it's such an appropriate location for that. So that's all.
Thank you.
I didn't state my name and address.
Yes, okay. That brings us to the end of our regular business. Do we have, I think we have something for closed session?
How funny you should ask. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph 1 concerning an appointment to boards and commissions, and one legal matter per sub-paragraph 7 for the purpose of consultation on specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by council concerning Virginia Dominion Power proposed project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Ms. Knutson.